There is a vacancy on the board of, Zone Board of Appeals for alternate member. Anyone interested, the volunteer application is on the Selectment page on the town's website. And also, the Board of Selectmen would like to thank Seon Landscaping for the beautiful spring flowers they provided in the planters in front of Town Hall. And also, while you're on the website, you can take a look at the, um, there's a lot of vacancies and expiring terms on, um, different boards and committees around town. The Board of Selectmen is getting ready to appoint those. So if you're interested, please go to the website and fill out a volunteer form. We are definitely looking for a lot of volunteers in the coming weeks. Alex, you had one more announcement?
I do. And if Jim would come up to the podium with me? So many of you may, may not know, it was nice Jim's last meeting. He was retiring, his term ends on the 24th, and he chose to run for reelection. Uh, he's gonna be selling his house and retiring to Maine. So, New Hampshire, New Hampshire. So Jim and I have known each other for many, many years, and, uh, he can correct you if I'm wrong, but I think, I was chairman of Conservation Commission back in the early nineties, and I got a complaint about someone working near the wetlands up Rockland Street. And, uh, I went up there and shut it down. And, uh, he says, "I'll show you." And, uh, we joined the Conservation Commission. We became great friends. We've had a lot of fun together. Our families are friends, our kids, our wives. And, uh, we've been to Canada together. We've been, uh, golfing together. Uh, he's really been a true friend. And he's the only person I know that could run for Selectment. When I decided not to run in 2018, he jumped in and said he would run. And he's the only person I know that spent the entire campaign on his condo in Florida, and he did no campaign, and he won. But I think that goes to, and that's a true story. Like, he held signs for a half hour, and it was two folks who gave up on that. Uh, but I think that goes to show what the people of Abington think of him. Uh, he's very, very well-known, very, very well-liked in the town of Abington. So I'm honored that Congressman, 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 as you know today, and he has asked me to present this to you, a certificate of special congressional recognition from the USO, or presented to Jim Farley, in repetition of two decades of service to the town of Abington, as a member of Conservation Commission and a member of the Board of Selectmen.
Jim, thank you very much. Twenty years is a long time. Much appreciated.
You gotta, you gotta go, Tim.
Yeah. I'm just trying to make six at this point. Uh, public comments, does anybody have any, um, comments on anything on today's agenda? There will be time during, um, some of the, some of these items if, to make public comments, but does anybody want to speak before we get onto the agenda? So, uh, first up is old business. Um, the only thing listed on old business is correspondent from Susan Weaver, an Abington resident who had wrote us a letter, and I'm not sure if it fell through the cracks or what, but we seem to think that the Board of Selectmen was under the impression from the previous town manager that this was all set and was no longer an issue, and come to find out, I guess it still is. So, I don't know. Scott, did you want to know anything on that, or is Susan here?
Yeah, I know, is Susan? Would you like to speak on it?
I don't think so.
Please.
Please step up to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Susan Weaver, 33513 in Abington. And, uh, at, at the last town meeting, they said they were going to move DPW, we voted to put on another DPW man, and Sean said at the time, Sean Riley, that the moderator said at the time, "Well, he's gonna be basically the mower, you know?" So I got thinking about Griffins and needing mowing, because right now, um, they're renting five acres of Griffins, uh, to a farmer in Sitewatt for $5. And, uh, essentially keeping Abington residents off of it, because it's family, just wants people on his farm, you know, it's busy. So, uh, I said, "Well, Jesus, if they run it on the mower, maybe we can get..." I, I went to Griffins Committee, and I asked them, you know, "Why, why would you do that?" You know? And, uh, they said that they, that it was cost, the guy that used to mow it didn't want to mow it anymore, paid it. And, uh, so that it was cost prohibitive to get it paid, and the farmer would pay the field that he wasn't using, plus, you know, plow and take care of the fields that he was. And, uh, so when I heard the new, uh, man, I said, "Oh, that might work." So in, uh, January of 2020, I wrote a letter to Selectmen saying, "Is it possible to DPW if we do it now?" And I got no response. And then I wrote another letter, then it was COVID, you know, like, and I, I know, you know, people that serious problems, and who gets to use public lands, a mind of consideration at that point. And so I wrote another letter in August, and then I got no response to that one. So I wrote a third letter in November, and Alex called and said, "I'll get back to you. I'll look into it, get back to you next week." But I never heard any more from that. So I wrote a fourth letter, this January of this year, asking to say, you know, who do I ask? If I don't ask you, who do I ask? And, uh, that's it. Oh, and Mike, um...
Kalu, Jay.
Kalu.
How are you? Nice to meet you personally.
Nice meeting you personally, yeah. You called and said, uh, you know, "Call me back, and we'll talk about it," and then I looked into it.
Yeah.
And I called back, but it was voicemail.
I apologize.
So, I, my question was, is it possible to open up all three fields in Griffins to the people in Abington and get somebody else to do the, I think it's once, twice a year it needs to be mowed, and, and have the, you know, have the whole property? Because right now, they remove the walking trails, and just, you know, the only field the walking trails are on is designated as athletic fields, nature athletic. So when that gets to be athletic fields, is, you know, the walking paths around the walk, which isn't particularly, if you're a mower, particularly good. And if you look at the map, if you go to Griffin's property, you look at the map, the only thing, the only thing it shows is that, that, and so if you walk trails, you just tail over there, doing, I'm a gardener, uh, doing some of the nasty parts that nobody likes in gardening, and you're over there doing it. So this is in no way meant to cast any, I'm a number one fan, I told them that they work very highly of the area. So I don't want it to seem that I'm criticizing away, but just like, "Oh, we've got another guy. Can we get him to do Griffin's doing, open the fields for everybody?" And that's a beautiful place, if you've been down there.
Yes.
Watching, and walking, and he was getting the perfect space on, like, anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. All right. And, um, so, when I, when I did come here, I did go down to visit, um, Griffin's Dairy, and I think I, um, it might even have been this letter and an invite from them that sort of triggered my visit. Uh, my question to the Department of Public Works Director was, you know, "Do we have the capacity to do that?" And he said, "Absolutely not." He would love to, but he doesn't. And the, the arrangement that they have seems to work, uh, but I'm gonna let the committee address that, but it was, uh, not their intention, as it is, uh, they feel that they could probably use two more, um, DPW workers and still have a hard time keeping up with everything they have to keep up with. Uh, so it is great that the volunteers do a, a lot of the mowing. You guys have a new mower down there. And, um, the arrangement with the farmer, I do know that that was put out to bid. You, you found somebody who was interested in it. I don't think you have a lot of people that were interested in it. Um, my, um, history with putting stuff like that out to bid is there aren't a lot of people, especially in this part of the state, that are...
It wasn't put out to bid because the amount was so little. I asked.
Um, I was told it was.
It was bid, and they said, "Oh, you have a good deal." It's not something you did.
All right. But I'm gonna ask the committee to answer, if you'd like.
What would be the question again?
Just in general, why, why you're...
I'm Jake Kenner, I live at 1.3 Mills Street. I am the project manager up there. Um, some years ago, and some of you guys and ladies will remember this, uh, we had a problem with the high school going in, and we had no place for soccer fields to go. And, uh, the board at that time was Selectmen, decided that we would, uh, make Griffins farm soccer fields. If any of you have ever been down there, you know how wet it is, first of all. Uh, last year, we couldn't get a tractor in to cut the area where they want to put the recreation fields. It is also overseen by the DEP, never mind the Conservation Commission, the DEP's got a project number on there. So anything we do, we have to take some attention to the DEP. Um, what happened was, the Selectmen at that time decided to go to a study by the Platte County, I can't remember the rest of it. They did a study of that land, and they said it would be abuse for recreation, some apolitical type work, and fine. So, what happened was, they tried to put the soccer field up there, and John Stone spent quite a bit of time up there four or five years ago, in that field where they're growing now. This is just a few moments, and I'll get to the bottom line. Um, and what happened was, they found out that the field where they want to put the recreation fields was, had a condition. So all of a sudden, they decided, "Let's go over there," and the Selectmen and DPW built that parking lot on Patterson. And, um, the soccer league found out, talking to contractors, that it would cost them well over $100,000 to make that field playable. And they totally backed out, and they ended up going away with it, and now they're back behind the high school. So what happened was, in the meantime, we had a horse farmer, I think that's his last name, he's a milk guy in Orwell, he was cutting it for hay for his cows. And then when he found out we were letting dogs up there, he said, "I can't hay it anymore, because if they poop in the hay, they're gonna sterilize my, sterilize my cows." So it was also, all of a sudden, wild, because one of the conditions of the DEP was that it had to be mowed and baled. So, in, in trying, he turned around and got a horse farmer, a Dutchberry, to come up and do that. So this is how we got that going. In the meantime, horse farmer said, "You might want to get ahold of this RC Simon, uh, Ron Simon's down in Sitewatt, he may want to find." So we called him, and he said he, he looked, he had some interest. We talked to Rick LaFawn, the last town manager, he said, "Let's have a meeting." And they had a meeting, they wanted to listen to things, what they could do, what they couldn't do, uh, how much it costs a year, we stayed on, and that's how it was. It did not go to contract. It's very few and few people that you can find that do this. Um, we did it because there was a payment net chasing, there's less than once people with the tractors, the baling equipment, all that equipment needed. And, um, so we kind of said, this had a purpose of farming, this is farming, but they farmed that, they did their field in the back, and they, last year, they were over on the Gallow side, and they had a corn over there. So it did not go to bid. I'm here for questions.
So, um, DEP says that we have to hay that.
DEP, DEP said four years ago, it has to be cut and hayed.
Exactly. And in order to hay it, we can't have dogs and people walking on it.
If it goes through a dairy farm.
Right.
So do we stop, I, you know, I'm all in anything, because...
Well, I think...
I don't know if you saw on Facebook this week, we're finding dog poo on the bridges, $25,000 urges, and they put some dog poo on it. No one picks it up. Um, it's the same thing that you had on the...
We had a problem at Ladler at our last meeting, so...
So, you stop them and block them, and then we just say, "Hey, there's no dogs allowed?" And we go back, and I'm sure he'd probably, how to hay it again, but he probably would want to know with some definite information that there's no dogs in there, and how do you do that too?
Well, I think we're bound by DEP's regulations that we have to hay it.
It has to be cut.
Right.
And that'll be another issue coming for you, because Abington Celebrate wants to put Christmas trees up there. That's something we'll have to discuss at some point with the...
My understanding too, if you, if you don't farm that land, at some point, it loses its status as a farm. Is that correct, with DEP?
I believe it has lost its status. What they're trying to stop is when you do not cut that hay, the conservation land keeps moving up.
The, the wetlands would just grow and ruin the entire area that we won't be able to use it at all.
At all.
So that's why it has to be maintained, and Jim and I run 20 years on the conservation, as you just heard. Uh, but that's why it has to be maintained this way, and DEP is requiring us to maintain it that way, for a reason. Otherwise, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, we'll have five acres that's unusable.
Right.
And we won't be able to do anything around there also, because we'll be within 100 feet of the wetlands. So...
Five years ago, we had Delbre, who, that was the first person we found over Rockland, he cut it, and he charged us 12, or 14, I don't even know, $4,000, just to cut it, never mind picking it up. So it's not a cheap situation here.
No, I think, I don't think we have a choice but to abide by DEP's regulations on this, so...
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I guess our choices then are to pay to have it done, or, you know, add the DPW to have it done.
Does DEP come in and do checks? Will they, will they ever update that, or what will be the...
Uh, what they would have to do is, if they wanted to do something different, they'd have to file with the Conservation Commission, and every Conservation Commission filing goes to DEP. And that's where you get the DEP number. So DEP looks at every filing that the Conservation Commission gets.
And is, the town isn't set up to, to mow and, and hay that?
No. The mower we bought is not suitable for...
Jack King says he's got a fail, fail mower that he has cut up there, but it's manpower there. But then, if he lays it down, who's gonna pick it up? Because that's part of the deal too, you better get a rock in there.
I mean, and the, the DPW severely understaffed as it is, so adding this onto their plate, I mean, John Stone does a great job, but, I mean, there's only so much they can do with limited manpower. Now, Scott, when I got on, I thought I had, at some point, I was going back a couple years, and I was talking to Rick LaFawn, the previous town manager, and he had, I'm pretty sure, and maybe when I had met with him, he had, he showed me a contract that he had signed with that farmer, and I want to say it was for like two or three years, which would be coming up next year, is that...
One, and then he just signed the two.
Okay.
Because what we were going by, and what Rick said, if you go, and then Scott, I think corrected us, if you go for three years, you're gonna go in front of the town. But I think Scott said if it's over three years, because I think that's the next one we'll be doing.
So the next, the two years is coming up?
After this year, that contract will be up.
It, it does lend some other problems though, the fact that, I, I was under the impression, strongly under the impression that it was bid. Um, and it sounds like it wasn't, which I'll have to discuss with council, because, um, there is no dollar threshold on the use of property, you know? It, it still has to be bid, so we may end up having to do something, even though we're not likely to get any bids.
I mean, Rick sat down with this guy, and said, "How much is it gonna, what do you think you're gonna put in for seed?" And he was talking to us just three, two years ago. $3,000 worth of seed. And he has a crew up there at least two or three times a week for two or three hours. And then he has to spend money for his gas, on the tractors and all that. So Rick said, "What you want in return of this?" He goes, you know, "He was, uh, growing peanuts and, uh, maize corn." And he said, "Probably $10,000? When I'm done with this, if I walk away with four grand, it's a lot of money." So it's almost like, how do you charge a guy? You know, this year, he did watermelon last year without any water up there, and he did great. He did all, um...
Squash.
All kind of plants, um, uh, no, no, no. And then he did the maize corn. So he did a little bit more up there this year, this past year. Plus, he cut the grass for us this year, about...
And Old...
He worked with us too.
And Old Colony Planning Council, when they did the study, uh, they suggested that we do farming and other things up there, and town meeting voted to approve that, I believe. So I think, um, although the residents and their dogs aren't allowed on every inch of the area, I think that's, we're bound by certain rules, especially with DEP, and, um, what we accepted from Old Colony Planning Council's study, to do exactly what's being done up there.
Once we lost the barn up there, we lost all interest of having that. Horse farmer wanted to put his cows up there, but he wanted the barn. And the barn, you know, I understand, somebody was afraid, somebody was not likely to match it, let it go, which you wouldn't. But it was in pretty good shape, but the land took it down, went into contract. I don't think there's an easy answer here.
No.
How many acres are usable for the residents?
Well...
I'm just hearing, the wireless microphone is not working for whatever reason at the podium. So yell, please.
There's 60 couple acres up there. About half of them are in Rockland, and the other half is in Abington, so we're up behind the golf course. Um, out of those 64 acres, you probably got 10 acres or so that is accessible by people. But now we get into problems if it isn't cut. Every couple weeks, you're gonna get chicks up there. Why do you want people walking through with chicks? And I try to tell people with the dogs, they love to run wild, and in one ear and out the other. Again, no easy answer here.
No. That's something we need to look at, and we need to get resolved.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, I don't think there's anything the Board of Selectmen can do at this point. There's certainly not a motion or anything that can fix it. It's really work with the town manager, to work with Griffin's Dairy, to work with the residents, to...
I mean, do we have somebody lined, lined up for the haying this year? I missed, is someone lined up to do the hay this year?
Not yet. I was waiting for another month or so, and called Jeff to find out if he's interested still. And if he isn't, it used to be some years ago, Ryan Holbrook, that was interested, but he sold everything, not that he is.
So, I mean, we'll do our best. Unfortunately, the answer is not the DPW though, right now.
No, it can't be, no. I mean, ideally, if we could at some point, you know, we could hay it ourselves and sell it, or whatever we're doing, it would be great, but I, I don't see that happening.
It's, it's not that kind of hay though, I think, that, it's for feed, right?
Was that...
It's just for feed, it's not a, it's really not a commodity.
Well, I have goats.
We found someone to hay the field.
Do they eat a lot?
No.
You know, you've got something there out, but I think the expenses, the tunnel has to be made.
Right.
Never mind hay it, who's gonna stand out front and sell it?
Yeah.
And then you're gonna keep it covered? You're getting five bucks a day.
Right.
What I found out last year was, because of COVID, a lot of people gave up their cows and horses, and there was a glut of hay left over from '19, because this guy from Duxbury, he was gonna cut it, and now you gotta understand, he, he doesn't pass anything, but he cuts it, bales it, takes it. Now, when they did the whole place, you know, including where they farmed, they got around 1,300 bale, 50 pound bales. When they did just the front and the apolitical field area, they got around 600 bales. So you can see, it's coming down the bales. At what point do they say, "Hey, there's not enough bales up there to make the work apolitical up there and do all the work?" I mean, the balance is, this is...
I don't know what the answer is.
We'll just, we'll keep working, and I'll keep working with the committee and try and figure it. But unfortunately, at this point, um, you know, DPW does not have the capacity to do it, and it doesn't look like the, you know, we have the ability to use that area one way or another.
Right.
Seems like it has to be hay, and it has to be hayed, and it has to be kept somewhat clean.
Right.
I certainly hope we can keep it as agricultural. I hate to see us lose it to something other than what we got going on up there now.
Well, I...
I'm not too sure if we are or not. I have been told from unreliable sources that we lost that up there because it hasn't been used since 1994 as a farm.
So the, the statute for farming, it, with what you're doing out there, if he's making, I think, $1,000 a year, or close to that, you have excessive five acres?
Yeah.
And you're actively farming it? You're a farm?
One more time?
You're a farm. You're legit a farm.
I agree.
You have excessive five acres?
Yes.
So, yeah, as long, he's actively farming it, you're in excessive five acres, and you're producing at least $1,000 worth of crop in a year. That's the, that's, you're, you're, you're good.
Yeah, okay. I, I just question you, because you don't know what you're gonna sell it for.
Doesn't matter.
What kind of weather are you gonna have? Because he does not have one up there, so he's waiting. Grace of God, you're owning.
Okay. So we'll keep that on old business, um, and check back in maybe next month or something to see how it's going. Thank you, Mr. Anna. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Griffin's Dairy Committee as well, for all your hard work.
Um, since they're here and they're on the agenda, do you want to skip to, number three?
Yeah.
Unless they want to wait?
No, well... What does the board think? I, I assume just keep it in order.
Keep it, keep it going then, yeah.
All right. I'll vote to approve the minutes of March 22nd, 2021.
It's just for feed. It's not a, it's really not a commodity.
Well, I have goats.
We found someone to hay the field.
Do they eat a lot?
No.
You've got something there out, but I think the expenses, the time it happens.
Right.
Never mind hay it. Who's going to stand out front and sell it?
Yeah.
And then you're going to keep it covered? You're getting five bucks a day.
Right.
What I found out last year was because of COVID, a lot of people gave up their cows and horses, and there was a glut of hay left over from nineteen. Because this guy from Duxbury, he was going to cut it. And now you've got to understand, he doesn't pass anything, but he cuts it, bales it, takes it. Now, when they did the whole place, you know, including where they found it, they got around thirteen hundred bales, fifty pound bales. When they did just the front and the apoloatical field area, they got around six hundred bales. So you can see, it's coming down the bales. At what point do they say, hey, there's not enough bales up there to make the work by law up there and do all of it? I mean, the balance is, this is.
I don't know what the answer is.
We'll just, we'll keep working. I'll keep working with the committee and try and figure it. But unfortunately, at this point, you know, DPW does not have the capacity to do it. And it doesn't look like the, you know, we have the ability to use that area one way or another.
Right.
Seems like it has to be hay, and it has to be hayed, and it has to be kept somewhat clean.
Right.
I certainly hope we can keep it as agricultural. I hate to see us lose it to something other than what we got going on up there now.
Well.
I'm not too sure if we are or not. I have been told from unreliable sources that we lost that up there because it hasn't been used since nineteen ninety four as a farm.
So the, the statute for farming, it, with what you're doing out there, if he's making, I think a thousand dollars a year or close to that, you have excessive five acres?
Yeah.
And you're actively farming it? You're a farm?
One more time?
You're a farm. You're legit a farm. You have excessive five acres?
Yes.
So, yeah, as long as he's actively farming it, you're in excessive five acres, and you're producing at least a thousand dollars' worth of crop in a year. That's the steps, you're, you're good.
Yeah, okay. I, I just question you because you don't know what you're going to sell it for.
Doesn't matter.
What kind of weather are you going to have? Because he does not have one up there, so he's waiting. Grace of God, you're home.
Okay. So we'll keep that on old business, and check back in maybe next month or something to see how it's going. Thank you, Mr. Anna. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Griffin's Dairy Committee as well for all your hard work.
Since they're here and they're on the agenda, do you want to skip to number three?
Yeah.
Unless they want to wait.
No.
What does the board think? I assume just keep it in order.
Keep it, keep it going then, yeah.
All right. A motion to approve the minutes of March twenty second, twenty twenty one?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty second, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, March twenty second, twenty twenty one?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Discussion on Veterans Discretionary Fund. Veterans Agent Adam Guns here. You want to speak on this, Adam?
Yes, please. Good evening, Mr. Ackerman.
Good evening.
Good evening. So on February twenty third, two thousand fifteen, the Board of Selectmen authorized the added veteran service officer, the authority to administer discretionary fund to assist veterans, and their surviving spouses to an urgent or emergency situation that arises. There's immediate response. Since that was put in place and discretionary fund was, came together, one thing I realized is there's no policy in place on how it's used. So I wrote a short policy page that's not like you should have in there. The gist, the veteran must be discharged under conditions other than discharge, other than dishonorable. I will keep a record of all donations that are received by the Veterans Office, and the donations may be in form of paycheck. The policy I'm trying to implement is that I would have the authority to make payments to the veterans to demonstrate the need to make purchase to sustain daily living for any financial emergency that can be mitigated with use of the funds. Any veteran requesting the fund would have a maximum of five hundred dollars to one veteran with a maximum use of twice in a five-year period for a maximum amount of one thousand dollars. I'll make every effort to partnership local veteran based renovations too, so it just doesn't always come out of discretionary fund. Then I would also go through whoever the veteran's accounts are to make sure the need is there and genuine. And then the VSO also has the authority to deny a veteran request of funds. If I deny a veteran request of funds, they have the right to speak with the town manager, assistant town manager, to review the, and to speak. No money will be given directly to the veteran. It will only go towards the services or items in need. And depending on amount of funds available in the discretionary fund, VSO also has the option to fund all or portion of a special project with the town of Abington with the approval of the town manager and/or the Board of Selectmen. Any special products, projects or donations given must be used solely for the benefit and/or recognition of veterans. Any questions at all at that?
No. So you're, you're just looking for us to approve this policy? And Scott, this isn't in, I know you, you're working on financial policies. This isn't in conflict with that?
From that, this will be his own policy. And, and obviously, it's good, you know, encourage these kind of policies. This gives a veteran who has to, you know, who wants to come to him, gives him an idea that we have rules to follow. And, you know, this is what the rules are. So it's great work from Adam. I'm glad he did it.
Any questions from the board?
Scotty, the only thing I see is they must be approved by the town manager or assistant town manager. It's in there a couple of times. Is that going to cause too much of a, like a, are you fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
I know communication sometimes, you're fine with that, okay.
Yeah.
And all the funds will be donated from citizens?
Funds are donated. I have not been advertising. However, we have like thirteen hundred dollars approximately that came in since I've just been here from funeral services, where the family member requested no flowers. And they like to have all the donations go to Abington Veterans Fund. We used to have a clothing bin set up out in town, so we've still been receiving.
Fun to me.
We were quarterly checked from a clothes donation bin. I'd love to start that up again, but we have to find a location that's acceptable. But I didn't feel comfortable advertising this or requesting donations that deliver the policy on how it should be used.
Thank you.
We need a motion to accept this. I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Motion to accept the Abington's Veterans Discretionary Fund. All those in favor of it?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Adam, let people know where they can donate now, that we have a policy. You want to plug where they can donate?
Absolutely. They can either cash or check. That can be sent in to town hall. The Abington Discretionary Fund, and we, and it's turned in, we can give them a receipt. It is not a tax.
Deduction.
It's not a tax deduction, so it'll be on a receipt, and so it's involved in document.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your hard work.
And one last thing, presenting an article for the warrant, it's actually going to be for next month. I'll reiterate to you, I'd like to brief that now, if that's okay. This is a property tax exemption for Gold Star parents. Currently, we have something already in place for Gold Star parents, which is a veteran spouse passed away while on active duty. We also have a tax exemption for real estate taxes. If a veteran dies from a service-connected, service caused, service connection, if a service member dies because of a service-connected death, it's deemed on the death certificate, they do get a hundred percent tax exemption right now for real estate taxes. So this is for Gold Star parents. The intemperies of the article grant full exemption for property taxes to Gold Star parents, or guardians and soldiers and sailors, members of the National Guard, and veterans who have died or are missing in action or reuniting. In August two thousand eighteen, the Brave Act was passed, which provides additional support to veterans and their families. Beginning January first nineteen, excuse me, January first two thousand nineteen, parents of surviving guardians of veterans who died in service for this country, they receive a real estate tax credit and property taxes. Surviving parents or guardians are eligible if the veteran died or became missing in action. Provided, however, they shall only apply for tax years beginning January first nineteen, two thousand nineteen. The other clause is it must be accepted by the city or town. So far, the surrounding towns, Rockland, East End, and Whitman, have all voted and approved the warrant for this exemption. Inside the Brave Act in section twenty-two Hotel of Massachusetts State Lodge, chapter one eighteen, real estate would be exempt for the full amount of the taxable value of the real estate property for the surviving parents or guardians. They must be occupied by the surviving parents or guardian. And further, the parents or guardian must have domiciled in the Commonwealth for the five years consecutively before the date of filing. As of today, this would only affect one family in town. It would be approximately possibly fifty-two hundred dollars per year, because there are tax increases yearly. The money that pays for these exemptions come out of, comes out of an overlay account, and close to one hundred percent of it is reimbursed back to the town, but it goes into the general fund. Are there any questions or concerns?
Now, this will be on a future agenda, Scott?
Yeah, so, and that's part of my report later, though, is we're putting a warrant together. One of the things, I think you're going to vote to close the warrant tonight, I hope. And this will be on there for you to review and discuss in the future.
All right. So I'd caution the board with this isn't on the agenda, not to discuss it tonight, but to just take the briefing forward it was.
There we go.
Thank you, Adam. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So up next, permission for food truck event at Griffin's Dairy. Does somebody on, from Griffin's Dairy, want to speak on the food truck event? Thank you. Come on up, please. Give your name and address for the record into the microphone.
Hi, I'm June Summers, Hanover, forty-sixth and Bond Drive in Hanover. I'm the president of the Subshore Food Truck Association, as well as owner of Home and Devil Food Truck.
So what are they looking to do up at Griffin's Dairy?
So Rich had reached out to me in December and asked if we would get some food trucks up to Griffin Farm on a weekly basis, similar to what we do in Hanover. I guess the goal is to get more people to use Griffin Farm. I guess it's a beautiful property, and we may not use it as much as the town would like. So we thought this would be a good idea. Food trucks certainly want different opportunities to be able to sell our food. So I missed the last meeting. Katie from L.A. Streets represented the association. And it's my understanding that you guys are mostly okay with it. I'm here to answer any questions that you have. We've done this for four years in Hanover. The first two years were at the Hanover Mall. Last year was our third year at Forge Pond Park. Hanover supported us by the park and rest department, allowing us to use the area up there. And we had COVID protocols, such as we drink homes and set them up six feet apart in front of the trucks for the lines. We have a porter and pickup line. We don't have any communal items out front. The association pays for one or two people to monitor the event. So we kind of like a first aid information booth. And, you know, this was new last year, but if people were starting to crowd, they would do all kind of make sure that they stayed six feet apart and so forth. But it was a wonderful event. We had no increase in COVID cases at all. This was actually more of the height. So the DPW would counter every and support us. They didn't, didn't charge us. And they would set out the trash, and then at the end of the night, empty the trash cans. And typically, the previous two years be a lie, because I felt we weren't allowed to do that last year. And I don't know that we'll be able to afford it this year, to be honest with you, because I think that one of the differences with your area is that there's no bathroom facilities that are, was at the mall, and there was at Forge Pond Park, so we're going to have to rent everything around, you know, ADA compliant porta potty to have there. All the trucks are insured, and will collect certificates and insurance listed in town of Abington as an additional insured, and get them to either the Griffin's Committee or his office, or both. Each truck has to be allergy awareness certified, served safe manager certified, fire department permitted in the Rome home base town. And they all have hawkers and peddlers license from the state of Massachusetts. I've already spoken to Marty, their board health, and he was fine with this. We generally do kind of a group inspection, so if this all gets approved, I'll reach out to him, and we'll probably have all, all the trucks inspected one night, courtesy of the company. They'll all obviously have a permit from the town.
So are you familiar with the property up there? Have you been to the Griffin's Dairy Farm property?
Have I been there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So my, I guess my only concern would be, do you think the crowd you plan on attracting needs, are we going to have traffic issues, need police detail? Have you talked to the police department?
I can, I could probably answer that for you. So we did have a meeting out there. The committee, myself, representatives of the association, fire chief, police chief, and the health director. So we all did meet out there. We looked at the area. We had some suggestions. You know, we do have some concerns, but we did work everything out as far as how traffic would flow, where the parking would be. We have a, half of it would actually be blocked off, so there would be no traffic or driving through one side of it where the trucks would be set up. Like, again, we discussed they would have a, at least one, maybe two porta potties, ADA compliant. We, we did talk to them about having a detail officer for at least the first couple of events, just to see how it works and make sure there's no traffic issues. We discussed posting some signs that they would take care of as far as no parking on the main road. And, you know, also directing people up to the alternate lot if needed, the Patterson Street lot. So I think we, you know, again, I think it's a nice plan. There's no intention of, of music at this point, at least not on our behalf. You know, the hours are nice. The, the idea, though, again, it's to, it would be to, you know, bring some focus to the farm, get some people out there, let them know it's there. It's also just something nice to do and different for the community. And I think at some point, as we look at it, we'll be able to do some stuff with some local vendors. I think it'd be nice for, Abington Celebrates could have a presence out there. You know, obviously, Griffin Dairy can have a presence out there, and they can also solicit donations while they're there too, to help, you know, with some of their expenses. But I think, Rich, did you want to get up and speak also?
There would be, as Scott said, we, we talked with the police chief, the fire chief. They're giving up with some great suggestions. I'm an ex-telephone person, so I don't know where you bought trucks, you know. So the chief come up with some great stuff. There would be, if you looked at Griffin's Dairy, the left driveway, we would have one of their trucks going across at this way, so people could knock it in, and then we'd run the other five trucks down. At the top of the horseshoe curve, we'll block that off so cars can't go over. As you've seen, we moved the loop, thanks to John Stone and Dan Soper. So that's all behind the fence. People are actually, even this year, they're coming up trying to buy it from me. And it's like, this is incredible. No, it belongs to the town. But it's moved, so we have opened up the parking lot pretty big. There's a little bit more work that John has to do up there, and he's willing to line it. I guess they did miss that dot font before it was tarred. And the lines will stay out three or four weeks, he said. I'm surprised, but he knows. And we're going to cordon off that medium strip. So, you know, in today's world, COVID, people get very upset very easily. And all we need is somebody pull it in, and somebody pulls in behind him a box and blocks it in, and the person gets knocked, and he could drive across that. But we don't want them over there. So we'll put some kind of a barrier in there, and to keep the honest, honest people out. It's four to seven on Wednesdays. I, myself, was involved with the farmers' department with Lorraine Ryerson. That was Saturday mornings, and I do know what you're talking about a traffic, and that's my big concern too. As you all know, four to seven, everybody's going south on eighteen and fifty-eight. So this could be a problem down the road, but we will open up the Patterson Street parking lot. How many people you can get, people down here, whatever, but that could be a runoff. Katie has told me, they don't get a lot of people at one time. It's just continuous. Is that true?
Yeah, I mean, this event will start off slowly, because no one knows about it, right? So even when, like in Hanover, when they know about it, it takes a few weeks before it starts to ramp up. Our peak is probably July, where there's the most people. But the, you know, the event is from four to seven. You know, you have people come during all that time. They're coming, they're hanging out, they're leaving. So it's kind of, it turns over. And I just wanted to make one, one note about that. At first, last year, when we did this in Hanover, they wanted six trucks. And I understand, and that feels like a comfortable number. We ended up increasing it to ten, and the reason we did that is because it actually thins out the crowd. So there's, it sounds like a lot of trucks, but food trucks break down, or sometimes they can't come. So we ended up starting with six in Hanover and, and growing it to ten, because it made the lines shorter and go through more quickly and disperse the crowd a little bit more. I'm not asking for ten, and I, I understand the starting with six, but that was kind of what ended up happening there last year.
Good. Thank you.
Scott, the trash issue, DPW set up the trash piles. Has that been discussed?
We did talk about it with, with John Stone, but I think that we'd probably ask for some assistance with the association on that. I don't think that we want to.
We're totally, you know, each truck, we're totally happy to have each truck put a barrel out, and they would take that. But I would just caution you that there should be other barrels there, because that, it just keeps.
We'll definitely have additional barrels.
It keeps it cleaner.
John said there wouldn't be other barrels, and he would be willing to help you.
Who would be responsible for porta potties if they?
So I guess we would. I mean, I, I've called, and I've gotten quotes on it, and they would, you know, bring them and kind of leave it for the season, and they would come and empty it once a week. And they said, I believe they said we could basically just unlock them during that time, so that, you know, they weren't necessarily used all, all week, because we'd have to probably empty it multiple times.
Now, I followed that up with Ann Riley this morning, because Ann, up at the pickleball courts, does have a porta potty, and they do have to lock it. And they lock it. And she actually goes down on Mondays when they clean it out to open it up, so they can get into it. So, you know, we, I'm always down there, so as long as they came in the morning, they'll see me. So we'd be okay with that, you know?
And we, again, you know, just cost-wise, we thought we'd start with one, which is ADA compliant. And, you know, if the event grows and there is a need for more, we'd be happy to add another one. one.
I think, I've gone to the Hanover one. They used to show movies there at Dass and it got a huge crowd, but that was, I think a lot of people are coming for the movies too, so that was a big influx. And obviously Weymouth had live music at the Naval Air Base, which brought a lot of people in. So I think limiting that, you'll have a good showing.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Especially with Ellie's and.
People love it. I mean, they end up getting, you know, blankets and they go and sit in the field and, you know, the kids play. It's a wonderful family event.
Anything else from the board?
No.
So we'll just make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the food truck events at Griffin Dairy Farm on Wednesday evenings, four to seven PM from May to October.
Seconded.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I've got to write up everything I just said. Let me just hand it out.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is discussion on 267 North Quincy Street. I see Chief Nuttall here. Chief, did you want to give us some update on what's going on?
Good evening, thank you. Jim, I know you're retiring and you're moving up to New Hampshire, but we are absolutely preparing you if you want to run for selectman up there. We're talking about hay and all kinds of stuff. So 267 North Quincy Street, as you know, about three weeks ago, I gave that report that we had an initial inspection that day and we had a chance to compile all of the findings and we issued it in order to correct to the owner. It was fairly lengthy and there was a time schedule on that. Some of these issues had to be corrected within 24 hours. Some of them you had much more time dependent upon whether the emergent issues or what, you know, sometimes just things just take longer. So we were cognizant of that. We did a follow-up inspection a week ago, a quick inspection, driving through. And when I say we, I'm talking about my members of the fire department, the police to escort us, members of the building department and the board of health. Each one of these inspections, we have requested and received an administrative search warrant from Brockton District Court on that, so just the town's covered, there's no question on that. Again, this is all private property. We did a follow-up, a more thorough inspection this morning, walking through there, finding, you know, what we're seeing is a lot of the tenants up there really have begun to clean the areas. We are seeing a noticeable change in cleaning up a lot of the, almost every propane tank that we saw the first time has been removed or even removed from forklift trucks because they don't have a permit for that. So they really are trying to comply. There's a lot of dumpsters that were filled, beginning to remove some of the vehicles. There is, I did receive today finally a listing in a contact list of the businesses up there. I received that late today, it was after we did the inspection, as well as a map. We also met with the owner's son, who is the, I guess, the liaison for the owner on this in trying to get some of these things done. And he, again, we reiterated the fact that there's still a number of things that they have to comply with, that as of right now, they have not. We're, they're working towards it, the tenants are working towards it. In totality, they're still not in full compliance. We had a meeting today with the town council on the best way to proceed. That meeting occurred prior to me receiving that list and the map, which I did forward to them. So at this point, I think the best way to give the status update is they're still not in compliance. The town is seeking any and all legal actions necessary to bring them into compliance as any business in town should be. We are getting assistance from them. They are beginning to comply slower than we would like. And again, we're working with town council on that. Ultimately, they will comply one way or the other. Mr. Town Manager, I don't know if you have any comments on that or?
No, just as he said, you know, we're all working on it. It was so late in the day when we did hear from, representative from the owner, but, you know, we want to work with them. Obviously, the easiest solution here is to work with them and come up with, you know, a way to get them into compliance. I think that they are making an effort. Again, it's not as fast as we might like it to be, but again, they are starting to make more of an effort. So I don't, I'm assuming you might want to speak to this, Vic?
Please just give your name and address for the record.
Victor, I live in Taunton, so I think, I mean, you guys said it pretty good. Everything's in progress. We're pushing towards getting a lot done. A lot has been done thanks to the tenants. There's still a few things that I need to do, turning in the application for the permit for the fuel, a couple of other things. Took a long time to get that list, but I finally got it. So, I mean, again, everything's just kind of in progress and we're pushing for it, but, you know, everybody also works every day and other things like that, so nothing can just kind of happen overnight. But people, again, are putting in a serious effort because there's a lot of work to do and they've done a lot of it already.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I was approached today about the assessed value of that land. Thirty-six acres and it's only assessed at $192,000. And this is a generating revenue up there and it just seems to me that $192,000 valuation for 36 acres of land, it seems extremely low.
That's a different.
Yeah, I'm not saying I don't agree with you, but it's off subject.
Right. Well, people had questions, so I was asked to bring it up.
Thank you.
I just, the only thing I want to say is that we're, I've been contacted by residents for an update on this and this is the first update that the board is getting at this point. So I would like to see more frequent updates. This is a big thing. People reach out to the board, we don't have information. So I know I said at last meeting, we get frequent updates, we can kind of follow this. So I would just reiterate that to you, Scott, if we can get more frequent updates, then this is a big issue here.
Sure.
The fire chief asked me to put together kind of like a, I don't know what you'd call it, like a review almost of things that I have done. And he wants me to do that more often. So from my end, at least there'll be something written out, you know, per lot as to what we're doing, what's been done, what needs to be done. And I'll turn all that into him. So at least on my end, there'll be something hopefully weekly, if not every other week. Just kind of bringing out points on what we've made progress in, if that helps at all with getting more info.
Any, yeah, any information we can have is good for us.
If I could too, and this is somewhat not fair to the owner because they have not heard this. I only heard this tonight getting here from a resident and we'll have a discussion on this. One of the issues we have to deal with, and again, this comes into the licensure and the permitting of what businesses are up there, and it's not even my department, but I've kind of taken this on, so I'm speaking for that, is the hours of operation. Because I'm hearing, you know, we have to determine what the allowable hours of operation are up there as well as ensure that if they are off hours, the property is secured. Because I'm hearing from residents, and I only heard this tonight, just prior to this meeting, that there may be activity going on there at all hours of the night, which would not be acceptable for any business, I'm assuming, depending upon the business. So we're going to have that discussion at some point and I'll also have to check with the zoning enforcement office of the building department just, once we find out what that is, to see what hours are allowed, unless that's your board that grants those hours, I think. So that just occurred prior, immediately prior to this meeting tonight, we have to look into that as well.
Well, I don't think this board has granted any licenses up there, so.
I don't know what type of work is being done. Are they cleaning up whatever they're operating businesses?
It may not even be the employees up there. This just could be if, that area is not secured, you may be having people going in there, which they should not be, which if that's the case, it should be secured.
Yeah, this, well, I don't know if this is it, obviously, we talked a little more, but I know that there is trucking companies and they come in kind of when they come in because they're coming from all over this country. So, you know, when they get here, if people are pulling in late, it's probably trucks, if anything else.
You have tow and companies up there too?
There's tow and companies.
I assume they work all hours.
Yeah, well, I mean, they probably have like 24/7 emergency toes, but I couldn't verify who those people, you know. But I do know that trucks pull in late and sometimes early hours in the morning.
All right. Thank you, Victor. Thanks for doing all the work up there and chief. Deputy, thank you, guys. Anything else from the board, any further on that? Okay, moving on. Vote to approve the community host agreements for marijuana facilities. I believe we have a copy of these here. Scott, you worked on these with town council. I think these are just kind of boilerplate for the other ones we've done.
Yeah, they're pretty similar. The one that you have in front of you tonight is from Natural Agricultural Products LLC. That's the only one that I've gotten back. As you know, Nash Mac is the other one. Actually, I just talked to him. He's still working out a few kinks with our, with our town council, but for the most part, everything's in agreement. This particular one that's in front of you, in a moment, I'm going to introduce you to the, to the owner and he can kind of give you a background on it. But the highlights on this one would be, you know, they are fairly standard. It's the community impact fee. It calls for 3% of gross sales. Those are in quarterly installments throughout the fiscal year. It continues for a period of five years from the commencement date of operations. It calls for a community benefit payment of $10,000 to the town for any municipal purpose, also in quarterly installments. They are required to contribute to any legal costs resulting from this negotiation or any other issues that might result with town council. And that's, that'll start once we execute the agreement. They will make a charitable donation, no less than $5,000 to a local charity, one that they will submit to us, you know, who they're going to give it to. The building and everything is taxable. And the rest of it gets into, they will do some educational programs. They will provide up to 50 hours of company-sponsored educational on public health and drug abuse prevention, the work, you know, with our public safety departments to get that done. They'll use the latest odor control technology. The, you know, security and safety plan will go through and be approved by our police chief. But that was most of the meat and potatoes of this. Again, Jim and I worked with town council on this. This is pretty much in, you know, going along with what we, probably the most that we get asked for going along with what the Cannabis Control Commission is recommending. With that being said, Gary Leonard, I'd like to introduce you to the board. Gary is Natural Agricultural Products LLC?
That is correct. I'm the CEO of Natural Agricultural Products. My name is Gary Edmund Leonard and I hail from your neighboring city from Brockton, Mass, 82 Bryan Drive. I want to thank the selectmen for allowing me to introduce myself to you tonight. I needed you to know that this is a collaboration. You are my, are my partners. If you approve this application, it's all about collaborating. I've traveled all the states that had it approved for the last four or five years. I got kind of stuck in Boulder, Colorado, where I met Sue Jones, who was the mayor there, who kind of convinced me that this industry was more than what met the eye. It's all about economic development, using it as a tool to build up unutilized, undesirable areas. And I brought this model to the mayor of Brockton at the time, Bill Carpenter. Now, Bill Carpenter and I were very good friends. I was on his transition team when he transacted from the Balzotti administration over to his and we had a plan. The plan was to take the most blighted building, preferably a old shoe factory, and convert it into an agricultural site and cultivating cannabis. So I went again, I went over and I made a lease on 53 Spock Street, which is 100,000 square foot, which is my capacity to do in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for cultivation. And this building was pretty much an eyesore for the last 35, 40 years. And the whole plan was to show how this industry not just changes the building itself, but changes the neighborhood around it and it could even go beyond that. I spent a lot of time on doing development and research. If you allow me, my assistant would like to give you a packet, giving you a little information about you. You did it already? Thank you. That also has in there my two provisional licenses for cultivating and product manufacturing, which I've already been approved from, from the state. I am, already have an application in for a dispensary, but I did not have a location until Abington came up as a prospect. I felt I was very lucky knowing that the owners of this property were also owners of the FW Webb property in Brockton, which I had my eye on, and they had sold it. So they told me about this property up here in Abington and made a connection to Mr. Benzanzin and I was lucky enough to find out that he was looking to transfer a license into somebody that knew a little bit about the industry. So again, this industry is all about collaboration, collaboration with your neighbors, collaboration with the other people that are in this industry, whether it be CDB or product manufacturing, delivery, or even a dispensary, or cultivation. We all need to collaborate together. We set the price, we make Abington a destination, and I'll show you exactly how to build up your downtowns. This is what I do for a living. I've done it for 49 years. I've been an industrial, commercial realtor for 49 years and I've been in economic development. Also, I was brought to National Main Streets Program. I was Brockton's main street manager for a small business in Brockton where I opened up 68 businesses in three years. Well, that's enough about me, gentlemen. I do a lot of charity work in Brockton. I sit on 11 different boards. I'm also on the Brockton Hospital Board. I was very instrumental in building that cancer, the Stephen Green Cancer Institute over there. I am a cancer survivor myself, if James knows. I don't have an esophagus. I had stage four lymphoma, stage four liver, and stage four esophageal and I lived. But I donated all my money before I did. My wife does not like to go through the capital gains thing with the IRS, so she says, get rid of that money. So I lived and I'm not going to ask for it back. So I'm 67 years old. This will be my last hurrah. I've made a lot of development and a lot of good choices in my life and I believe that Abington is my best choice at this time. So again, I appreciate you letting me state my game here tonight and I look forward to seeing you all in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just for the minutes, I know Alex kind of just got up and left, but he's abstaining from this discussion.
Yes, Alex recused himself from this discussion.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board?
There's a question for Scott. Can you, for the public, tell them what, what programs or projects we can use the impact fees for?
I missed it, I'm sorry.
What, what types of things the impact fees can go to that will benefit Abington?
So the, yeah, the municipal impact, I mean, there's things that could be, as we said, there's some of the monies earmarked for programs that will, that can be used to teach, you know, drug prevention and issues with drug addiction. There's any municipal expenses that are associated with this as far as if there were increased, increased need for police, fire, or any issues like that?
Inspection services.
Inspection services, yeah. There's, you know, a host of different things that this could be used for.
Thank you.
And if anybody's curious, I mean, I don't know because we didn't state it, but the location that there is within the, within the overlay district, it's on Route 18 currently where the school buses are parked. It's in that, that building behind there.
And the next step, just for the public, the next step in the process, they're going to have a public hearing, not a hearing, but a public meeting where they'll be allowed to come and ask questions.
Right. So what will happen now is if the, if the board votes to approve this community host agreement, and I will sign it, Mr. Leonard will take it to the Cannabis Control Commission and at the same time, he will fire, file with the planning board for site plan review and there'll be public hearings at that point. And of course, this is a duly noticed public hearing also. hearing also.
Thanks, Scott.
Any other questions? Any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve community host agreement for Natural Agricultural Products LLC.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the host agreement between Town of Abington and Natural Agricultural Products LLC, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous for there. Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alex can come back in the room now, if anybody wants to let him know. We got packets while you were gone. Unfortunately, there were no samples inside.
I know a guy. I know a lot of guys.
All right. Up next, vote on used article and pawn broker license renewals. I know we have three of them, but does anybody have it right in front of them?
I got it right here.
Jim, what three are we looking for a motion on?
We're looking for designer diva at 71 Brockton Ave., used articles. Electric planted at 1347 Washington Street for used articles. And ABC tech squad, 201 North Quincy Street, used articles slash pawn broker.
Thank you. So the motion we'd be looking for is to approve the license pending receipt of all paperwork, satisfactory inspections, and up to date taxes.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on these licenses? All those in favor of approving the licenses?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Up next is the vote to refer the zoning articles to the planning board. It's kind of a procedural thing that we have to do every year before the warrant is closed. So you were given a copy of the articles, right? They were in the-
They're in the packet, yeah.
Yeah, they were in the packet.
And a lot of them, you'll see, those housekeeping articles that we had on there, if you recall, at town meeting last year, that we wanted to refer back to the planning board. So I think you have a lot of them, and then maybe there might be one in there just to, I think one or two new ones on storm order. In the MS4 permitting again, yep.
Any questions from the board on the planning board articles? Or zoning articles, excuse me?
These are articles from the zoning board? From the-
These are the planning board. They're zoning articles. The planning board has to have the hearings on them before.
Right, okay.
So our motion is to do what exactly?
Refer them to the planning board.
For the hearings, the required hearings. Okay. I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of referring zoning articles to the planning board?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Up next, town managers report.
One more thing. We need you to vote to close the warrant. I know it's not on here, but it is, it has been on.
The date was today.
And you did vote for it in the past, vote to do it. So tonight, we did receive, I believe, six citizen petitions. So what, I think, we'll have them certainly by end of next week, middle of the following week, so you'll be able to have them for discussion on the following meeting, Monday, number 26. But yeah, I just need you to-
So we've looked for-
Look to close the warrant.
The motion to close the warrant.
For the annual and the special.
I'll make the motion to close the warrant for the annual and the special town meeting.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on closing the warrant? All those in favor?
Aye.
Warrant is closed, unanimous. Thank you. Now the town managers report.
Okay, um, so-
Most exciting part of the meeting.
The, the police keep search from RFP is out on the street. To date, I've sent it to Badge Quest MRI, which I think you remember, they did the management study for us, Paradigm Associates, and the Collin Center. It's advertised in The Beacon, which is an MMA, a Mass Municipal Association publication. So that's probably where it's going to get the most exposure. The results are due back to me on the 21st, and I will distribute them with instructions to you all later on the 21st. And then I will arrange for at least two of the, if we are lucky enough to get to, two or three of them to come in on the 26th, so we can go over, you know, what you've ranked, or what you've seen in the RFP. You can ask some questions, and we can make a decision on the 26th on who we want to use going forward. We have no update from the state or the federal government yet on the American Recovery Plan Act, which is what everybody knows as the latest, which is a million six or so to the town. From federal funds, we're just awaiting on exactly how we, how we go about using those funds. So the state's still looking at it. You know, as soon as I hear more, we'll, you know, I'll let you know. In your packet, I put a budget in front of you. We have a draft budget. It's still in draft form, but you'll see it's a balanced budget at this point. It has some minimal increases. Some of them, mostly are obviously contractual, but there's some minimal increases to fire, police, town hall administration, and school. At this point, it doesn't take into consideration any of the American Recovery Plan Act money, because we're just not sure how we can use that money yet. We are considering at this point to use stabilization to take care of our snow and ice deficit. As you know, we have over $3 million plus in stabilization that we're really good, we put as much in there last year as possible. We were lucky, we didn't balance our budget off it, nor do we intend to balance our budget off it. I was pretty surprised to see how many towns around us that were actually doing that, but I got to say we are in good condition, and we're not going to have to do that. We did, our trash bids have come back in for a trash hauling company. The bids were favorable. We actually did well. We haven't awarded anything yet. I want to put something out to the trash working group. I think ultimately we'll award this bid. But again, I want to talk with this working group that I put together briefly, because I think it's sort of an ongoing thing, is we have to look at how, you know, what our best practices are for trash collecting. Are we doing the right thing? Are we doing the best that we can do for the town? What kind of future issues we're going to run into? The rate that that's increasing will, again, outpace our budget pretty quickly. You know, and then there's obviously environmental concerns and whatnot. So there'll be more on that. So again, like I said, the draft warrant will go out prior to your next meeting, so we'll be able to discuss that. And I did put in your packet the new draft financial policies. Again, their draft, we'll probably still make some tweaks on it and have a future discussion. We don't have to, you know, there's no hurry to vote those in, but we do want to work on them and get them, you know, get them voted. Next week, or next meeting, we'll also have social voting here. They want to discuss a borrowing article that we're going to have on our town, on the warrant. So I think if you guys want to have any questions on the budget, Sue's here, so feel free to ask away. But that's it. Oh, wait, one last thing. Perhaps you noticed in your packet, you have a performance review for me. So what I'm going to ask you guys to do is each of you, just let me know, make it a point over the next, between now and the next meeting. If you can, come in, sit with me. You know, I don't anticipate it would take more than an hour, but if you can't, you know, if you want to make arrangements to do it over telephone, or whatever hours work for you, I'll make myself available. But each one of you should take the time, spend an hour with me, or whatever it takes, fill this out, get them all back to the chairman, and then he can compile what all your results are, and then we bring it out and just sort of mention it at the meeting on the 26th, or for a future meeting, and just say, you know, what the issues are. Okay?
Good enough. Any questions for the town manager? I'll take a motion. Oh, anybody following along at home on their agenda? There is an executive session on that that we are not going to do, because we have no further update on the collective bargaining with union personnel.
So you're looking for a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, but not from you.
Oh. Actually, I have one item that I can bring up before we do that. I received a call from the people on Adam Street, out in front of where we have the cease and desist, and they're not ceasing and desisting. So could we have Marshall take a look at that, find out what's going on up there?
So-
Get an update from you or town council?
No, we'll definitely get an update on it. The issue is, last I went by, they had all their trucks out, which is the cease and desist was that in occupying the residence. The latest complaint was that they were digging up this driveway over there.
Right. And I understood someone might be living in the residence.
Yeah. So I will ask Marshall or Marion to go out there, take another look, let us know what's going on. I did, you know, we asked town council if they would, again, go forward with this and, you know, file in court. And the recommendation from council is, is that we're not likely, because we are, there is an active attempt in a filing from the property owner, that the courts are not likely to do much to help us, you know, beyond what we've already done. So I think the only, you know, the other, you know, if there's, if it's possible to start levying a daily fine, then, you know, if there's a provision in the bylaw for that, then that's probably our next best.
Right. And that's what they were asking.
Who's in charge of doing that?
It'd be Marshall or Marion. It's a zoning offense.
Can we get an update on how many times they've been up there so far and following up at that next meeting?
No, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I do have a stack of letters from, from that office to, from Marion to the-
Okay.
To them, so. But yeah, I will put that on the agenda for next meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else?
As my last official act, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
And I'll second that, Jim.
Thanks. You got me into-
Any further discussion? All those in favor are adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you again, Jim, for 20 years.
Thank you.
You caught me, my God.